Oh my goodness! Oh my goodness, that is beautiful! Yes!
Diana, where's your purse?
Pardon what?
I'll put this in.
No, you put that right there.
Oh, there it is. That was the one right there.
John Tidwell.
I wonder if that person...
John Tidwell.
Wow! Look at that hair!
Good.
Mm-hmm.
He is right. How old is he? Don't turn around here and hide up where you are. I didn't hear you at all! Just fine.
Did he, isn't that kind of the person that he insisted on everything?
They have their thing about that.
She's doing pretty good.
Well, you used to do that. I'm not sure that. You should be, you have. That's a, that's a rabbit. That's, that's all. It's been a funeral, you know. Yeah. I didn't see you. Well, good, they start talking back. I didn't recognize her until I first saw her.
All right. Benton County District now setting Roseanne Ward chair.
My please, I'm by your head, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and your wisdom, as with against me. We pray, Lord, that this meeting will be pleasing to you and that we will move forward in the things that we do tonight for the betterment of our county. We thank you, Lord, from the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We know that your mercy is forever ending, and we just want to continue to praise your name in the good times and the bad times. We pray that you keep us safe and that you'll heal us, heal the sick and their families and whatever that they may be going through, anyone through a difficult time. We know, Lord, that we can always trust in you. In all of this, in your precious name, I pray.
Commissioner Stutz is going to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's answered.
Rocky Preston?
We learn something about this thing every time, don't we?
Eighteen present, three absent. One, two absent. And we have a forum. Next on the agenda is the nomination of the third district commissioner. Who do we have here tonight that's asking for the sitting in the third district? Would you please rise? Okay, Mr. Burke introduced himself the last time he was here, so unless you have some questions for him, we won't ask him to do that again. Does anyone have any questions for him? Okay, if not, then we will vote, and when Madam Clerk calls out your name, state the name, please. So, it looks like we only have one candidate.
What's your name?
The name is Brett Burke.
Can we do a vote? There's only one person.
We had it.
We have to.
Diane Ferguson?
In.
Right?
Yes.
Kevin Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Carr? Bill Mountain?
Yes.
The one you have on?
Yes.
Cheryl Hedo?
Yes.
Monica Henry?
Yes.
Carol Hede?
Yes.
Ronnie Hook, Hopper? My Hopper? Terry King?
Yes.
David Spouts?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward, present. Okay?
Yes.
I spent too much time with that. Too much sugar.
My little jury. Okay, Mr. Burke has been linked into the third seat. You can come up, and we're going to take just a five-minute recess and let him be sworn
Don't go to Brett's house, I'm afraid.
He's nine, you said? That's a great age. I can't wait to take Danny Fisher.
What, Woody? Oh, loaded, is that what it is? They had their dinner, didn't they? They did, they had a big time. Our Lincoln Security is Kerry's man.
Oh, okay, I missed.
We went to stand up to say that since he's got guns in him. I do the worst.
Next on the agenda is the approval of new agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Stutz.
Yeah.
You have requested to talk?
No, me and this phone ain't getting along. I'm sorry, Chair.
Okay.
But I'm trying to phone nap tonight.
Okay, there's no discussion, everybody, please vote. Rocky Preston?
Approval, yes.
Brett Hopper is present? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion period sixteen, yes, two absent. Next is the citizens forum. We have one person signed up for that, who is Ms. Diane Shepherd. Would you like to come forward, please, and introduce yourself?
Thank you. I like you all, this new system shows you how long it's been since I've been here. Thank you. My name is Diane Shepherd, S-H-E-P-H-E-R-D. I live at eighty-nine Main Street, Big Sandy. Several months ago, I became aware of several incidents which concerned me as a law-abiding citizen of Benton County. In the interest of time, I will not go into the details, but I have copies of the FOIA requests which I have forwarded to or passed on to the interim mayor and Madam Chair. I filed two Freedom of Information Act FOIA requests with Benton County Sheriff Kenny Christopher after my attempts to meet with him were unsuccessful because he adamantly insisted he does not do recorded interviews. I tried to explain my position for wanting to record our meeting as I understood Tennessee's one-party consent recording law, Tennessee Code forty-six-three-zero-three. Based on the sheriff's responses to the FOIA requests, I can only infer that either the sheriff was unwilling to provide the requested materials or provide a valid reason for withholding requested materials, or that the Benton County Sheriff's Department operates without written procedures or training materials for its officers. Either possibility is disturbing. In the first inference, the sheriff purposely circumvented Tennessee Open Records Act, Tennessee Code ten-seven-five-zero-three, and the following. In the second inference, officers sworn to uphold the law and protect Benton County citizens are carrying out their duties without uniformly understood written procedures or are in the same instance acting, or in some instance, acting in direct violation of the law. Ironically, my initial desire was to understand the sheriff's perspectives on the incidents and offer help in developing written procedural manuals and training, and training materials in conjunction with the department. However, the inability or unwillingness on this has convinced me to make my concerns public. Equally disturbing was my discovery that the sheriff is not accountable to anyone in regard on how he runs his department. It has been said, power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. I hope that the Benton County interim mayor and commissioners will look into the matter further. Citizens of Benton County deserve their attention in this matter. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here? Okay, the next place is our county attorney. Do you have any information, Commissioner? Okay, then next is an invited guest that we have here tonight. It's Mr. John Tidwell. And I'd like to say that Mr. Tidwell served as our state representative from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and fourteen. Out of those years, ten of those, he served as the Benton County State Representative. And I will have to say that he serves very well. I think he's one of the best that we've ever had. During that time, Mr. Tidwell was active in getting the Tennessee River Resort pass for us. And of course, we know that that's brought in way over four hundred thousand dollars and is still bringing money in today. So, he was part of that, so we owe him a thank you for that. There's lots of things that I could say about him, but as time goes by, you know, since then, I forget some things and I can't think of all of it. But if I could, I'd have a long list of things that Mr. Tidwell did for us. Another thing is the seal right here behind us on the wall. That is due to Mr. Tidwell during that time. He says he used his postal money to buy the seal and bring it out here and hang it in the county courthouse. So, when I see that seal, I think of Mr. Tidwell. Another thing was during his time as state representative, is when I was serving as county clerk, and there was one thing about our association. If we needed something, we called Mr. Tidwell, and he was always there for us. He was there to support us if we wanted him to support something, or if we didn't want it, he was there to fight against it. And one of those things I'll bring up to you is during those years, the state decided they wanted to title all boats in Tennessee. And so, you talk about a problem. And on top of that, we were going to have to charge the people for that title, and the clerks weren't going to get any fee off that at all. All of that money was going to go straight to the TWRA. So, the Clerk Association fought hard against that, and Mr. Tidwell, he was a big supporter of us on that. He has brought some books here tonight from Raise the Gunboat era. I'm sure all of y'all remember that, Raise the Gunboats. He is the last victim member that served on that community, Raise the Gunboat.
I appreciate that. I've got, I brought thirty of the books. Back when I served as your representative, you had twenty-four members. I had forgot you had reduced the number to eighteen, but I bought enough, brought enough books for everybody, and this book is the book that John Latham wrote on the history of the Magic Valley. We were going to use it to promote and sell so we could have money to raise the gunboats, but the federal government decided the gunboat was not going to be raised, so that was the end of our, our venture. And I'm left with several of these books, and I would like for you to, to read this and share it with, with others that, it has some interesting program. It has a complete story of Nathan Bedford Forrest. It starts at the primitive Indians and carries that on through until John's time and he died. But the pronounced article in here that he wrote, he was in charge of the news and getting it out and the search operation for the plane wreck of Hockshaw Hawkins and, and, that, yeah, he was in. There's a very good account of that in here. There's account of rumors such as John Wilkes Booth having taught school in the area here. If you remember that John Wilkes Booth was killed and it was supposedly, they burned the barn down and they weren't sure that it was him, and rumors were that he taught school here in, in, at the Bodine School just across the river, I think. But there's, there's a lot of interesting things like that. The world's largest man is in here from Darden, Tennessee, and all, anything John could think of, including the submarine that they dug up, the Civil War submarine, it's an added article to that. I hope you enjoy the book and remember what's going on and what has gone on in Benton and Humphers County. I do appreciate the opportunity to get here, and I appreciate the introduction, and, and I'm, I'm the sole author and sole sponsor of the Tennessee River Resort Act that you join, and you, and I'm thinking you get somewhere around two or three hundred thousand dollars a year even after I've gone.
That's great, Judge.
But you'll see that on there. When you see that dollar amount, think of me. Appreciate it, I enjoyed serving you.
Mr. Tidwell, Mr. Fowler just told me that you were also, you were also the one that supported the vintage license plate that you did on the...
Yes, yeah, I wrote the vintage license plates. I wrote every bill that has to do with the harvesting of forestry. Along with Bob Farmer, we rewrote the laws that dealt with West Vaco and ended up with West Vaco paying more taxes and selling back to the public and completely leaving your county. And I enjoyed representing you, enjoyed the whole time I was there, quite a process, and I sure enjoyed representing Benton County. I always attributed Benton County as having put me in. Humphers County was supposed to vote for me, but Benton County did that night. Thank you a lot. Any, any of the audience would like a book, I brought certain... This is a good man right here. He was there when I was there.
Did everybody hear Dana? Dana's one or two things before we went on, of Mayor Shannon, and I'll also add his wife, Jane, for supplying or bringing us desserts to people, and I'll go with them. Thank you for that.
Chairman, can I make a quick statement?
You can.
The Tennessee River Tourism was passed about two thousand and eight, and John was a strong, brave man. There was a lot of pushback. There was a lot of opposition. Minister O'Leary had to hold it strongly. They had a very, very large argument on what passed the Tennessee River Tourism. I won't get into their argument, but it was, it was convincing almost, but John stood strong, he was too brave, and what that amounts to, once it was passed, it allowed the state to take the sales tax and send us a portion back to Benton County. I don't remember the exact percentage, but Roseanne, you said four hundred thousand. It's almost four hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's been since two thousand and eight. I think it started out as a greater three hundred thousand, so we've received several million dollars off the Tennessee River Resort. We've probably got less bars than Benton County we've ever had. That was one of the big arguments. They thought it was going to lead to riverball gaming. I'll stop on that, but it was, I was a commissioner, I was on that side of citizens watching. It was one heck of an argument inside. Thank you, Chairman.
That's okay. We could keep on about things, Mr. Tidwell, you knew that was really good. They, in two thousand and ten, they changed the district, and that's why we lost Mr. Tidwell as our representative, and I do remember Benton County was really upset that we were losing him at that time. Okay, next is our county attorney, Mr. Fannin. Do you wish your up back, please?
Thank you so much. I will tell you, in your packet tonight, you see a resolution that has to be considered passed, is for opioid settlement. I do not have exact figures. At the end of that particular piece of information, you'll see the table being circled later when they figure out how much we're getting. That's going to be based upon who or whether which counties opt into the settlement. So, once I know that, I will be getting that information out to you, but the first step is that we do need to pass that because it will be generating money back to Benton County. I can't tell you what string might be attached to it or how much to be spent, but we do, we have certainly seen the problems that opioids have caused, so this can help to remediate the damage that that terrible addiction has caused, and we certainly want to participate in that. I have an invitation on behalf of Director Mark Florence, who could not be here for personal reasons, but he wanted me to make sure that you knew about December the ninth, December the ninth, at Briarwood School at five P.M. December the ninth, Briarwood School, five P.M. It's going to be, much like we had tonight, an informal, non-meeting, just an informal get-to-know with each other, where you come together with the school board and the county commission in a fellowship for Christmas. Five P.M., December the ninth, at Briarwood School. That's going to be an informal get-together, get-to-know-one-another, because you have to work together, it's good to do this. So, COVID knocked it out last year or so, but we've done this before, and we'd like to start this back up again. Just as you had the desserts tonight with the Thanksgiving-type theme, at this time, the Senior Citizen Center has said, I've got to confirm it with them, that they'd like to do the same thing for you on December the twentieth, if you decide to have your meeting on December the twentieth, I think you will, at five P.M. So, come again at December the twentieth at five P.M. The Senior Citizen Center, right now, may change. It's still good to dessert, but the senior citizens do them or not, but this will have obviously a Christmas theme to it. I thought it was great to see all of you fellowshipping with each other and having just a time of camaraderie, so we'll do that again. I will say those are the only two that are going to be going for a while, because Thanksgiving and Christmas, so also I'll let you know that December the eleventh is Christmas on the square. That's our Christmas parade, and the business association will have some things going on as well. We're hoping to have a nice Christmas tree up on the outside of Port Square for a minute or two, since we've had one of those, so we hope to have all that going for you. And that'll begin Saturday, December the eleventh. I want to tell you about the new Chamber of Commerce Director, Ms. Lori Matlock. She is to name the new Chamber Director. I bet you she'll do a great job for you. Lori Matlock, she's named here, you may remember her. There has been some issues about the handicap parking on whatever side that is, the direction. That's the, on the north side. Well, we're going to move that handicap parking spot to the north side and move it down closer to the east side, and we're going to make it a disabled veterans parking area. And so, they're going to have their own designated spot that allows them to get access to the veteran service officer a little easier, so they're going to have that spot will be made available to them. You don't know exactly where that is. It's currently marked, it says the maintenance spot. We're going to bring it inside, the employee area parking, that will allow them to get out, even in handicap wheelchair accessibility, all the way up straight to the door if they need to for that. So, we're proud to be able to do that, and we're getting designs made now to facilitate. So, that parking, handicap parking will go away, and then we will have the disabled veterans parking on the side here for them, so we're happy to do that. Also, I'm very pleased to tell you about a seventy-five thousand dollar no-match grant that we had to help with air quality in the courthouse and jail. And this system, we believe, when implemented fully, will allow for inmate sickness to go down and to keep COVID... for inmate sickness to go down and to keep COVID and anything else that will attack influenza, mold, fungus, other viruses, COVID virus, whatever. And it will permeate the whole area here. And so we're hoping to have that in place as soon as they release the money spoils. We'll get that order in place. So I'm expecting by at least January that you should see that system in place. And so we will have to get that. We'll get it installed in the jail at the sheriff's convenience once we get those as well. And hopefully we'll see some good turnaround in that that the COVID outbreaks, the flu outbreaks and all that will go away now. You can leave it in place with people there. There is a Lava Honor Hospital, other hospitals around. It sterilizes the areas where your hands go, hanging curtains, all that. It takes care of everything. You can actually be in the room while it's running. So it's just quietly in the background taking care of, taking care of the problem. So glad to have that grant available to us here at the courthouse and the, of the jail. And Madam Chair, that's all I have. The rest are questions.
Any questions? Okay, if not.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. It's nothing for the mayor. We skipped on the Commissioner forum.
I was fixing to go back to that.
Okay. What I want to bring up, last month, a point of order I abstained in a vote and I was told I couldn't do that without explaining. And that is incorrect. You can abstain. You do not have to explain why. If it is a conflict, then you can say it at that time and it don't count towards the vote. If it's a computer issue, then fix the computer. But I just want everybody to understand that if you abstain, you do not have to explain why.
Okay. Was there a computer?
No, we were advised by our attorney that anytime anybody abstained, they can vote a no vote. But if abstaining, you had to explain why. That was my attorney.
Okay, any remarks?
I talked to the Commissioner about that and the issue. There's a middle ground there and I think he understands as well. It's so that they can know whether it is or not for the voting count. So you don't have to give like a long explanation, but they just have to know enough to know whether to remove that from the count or not. So whether it's a conflict or if it's someone choosing not to, if it's like an abstention for calls or something like that. So you don't have to give like a full explanation of it. But they just need to know enough to know if it was settled out of that account or not. And he and I talked about that before. The Commissioner asked me because I wasn't here whenever that came up. So he told me before we started today.
Okay. The way I understand it, if you want to vote no, since we don't have a button, you don't push anything. You let it timeout and that will automatically be a no vote?
Yeah, that is correct. You let it timeout, that becomes a no vote. So that's, it's not a true abstaining, but it's a no vote either way.
That's the whole purpose of what he's talking about. If you want to abstain, you don't vote period. But then you turn around, turn it into a no vote.
Well, he pressed abstain and not. Last month, he pressed the button to abstain and not let it timeout to not be a no vote.
So. Because I didn't want to vote no. I wanted to abstain and not vote. You see, you understand where I'm coming. It's the same thing. If, if you ask somebody why they voted no, it doesn't make sense.
So in that case of what happened last month, just don't vote anything. Don't press anything. It will timeout and then it will register correctly.
Unless you're abstaining with cause.
Unless you're abstaining with cause, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we all understand?
Yes.
Okay. Like I said, we had skipped the Commissioner's forum, so we're going to back up. Do we have any other Commissioner? Okay, if not, we're going on to number 10 on the agenda is the approval of amendments. We need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any discussion? Please vote.
Rocky Preston.
Present. Yes.
Brett Harder.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. 16, yes.
Next is the report of the public utilities. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any discussion? If not, does anyone have a vote?
Mr. Frazier, are you wanting to apologize? No, hit the wrong button.
Well, I see. It looks like it was Mr. Frazier announced.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Brett Harder.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? 16, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, next is the approval of the Benton County Schools Agreement with the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any discussion on this? Questions?
This is a new thing. In times past, the Board of Education has been able to approve their own and move forward. But with input from the authors, they suggested that since you were a funding body, that you should approve it. So that's why you're seeing that for the first time. And so that, that would be a policy going forward that we're approving agreements for such purchasing. And there's lots of different companies that do this, but I'll look back at it from the school board. Obviously, I'll be.
Commissioner Hill?
Is this an annual thing?
No. Once you're in.
Okay.
Any others? If not, we'll vote, please.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Next is the approval of the report on the debt obligation for the county's $2 million capital outlay note. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Bring this to the floor. Any discussion? If not, then everyone vote to approve it or not to approve it.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? If he yes, one no.
Okay, next is the beginning of our resolutions, which is Resolution Number One, which is reappointing Jennifer Hedge to the Benton County Art Committee for a four-year term. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes.
Ms. Hedge could not be here without a conflict.
Any discussion or questions? If not, everyone vote, please.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their measure of vote? 16, yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution two is to appoint Jolene Costa to the Benton County Animal Shelter Board to fill a vacancy and existing term. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions?
Joel Costa was supposed to be here this evening, but she was held up at Work and Martin and she could not leave in time to make the meeting. She wanted to apologize to the Commission for not being here to present herself.
For those of you that may not know, Ms. Costa was a former employee at the animal shelter. And she did a fine job while she was there. And she's also, the board knows, the animal shelter board knows of her seeking this position there in Claymore, as well as the director of the animal shelter.
Any further questions? Everyone vote, please.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? If he is, then one no.
Resolution number three is to appoint Bonnie Evans to the Benton County Solid Waste Board to fill a vacancy and existing term, which expires February the 18th. Any questions? We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Ferguson?
All right. I'm just going to say, please, for approved by the budget committee, that I'm not going to say in particular one of the hotels. If there's one, I'm prepared to have that.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, everyone vote.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
White balance? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. 14, yes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number Four. To amend the previous action by the legislative body and to correct the rollover balance amount in the Governor's Statistic Grant Number One. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Do we have any questions about this or discussion?
Yes, just, I'd like to maybe explain what this is. Is this where we missed it? Were we picking it back up or what are we doing on the rollover?
This is where some of the funds were appropriated. And in the previous resolution, you had where the entire amount was done, but your budget actually had some of the funds already there that were just overlooked. And so we're having to correct the fact just to get the entire amount over. So this is just a correction to make sure that we're appropriating back into the budget, the correct amounts. So some had already been put in and this is just fixing, filling that gap.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can't do it. I need to spell some correctly. I don't think we have a mother vehicle.
What is it? Do you want to correct?
Life, life, some of your expenditure.
Expenditures. We have a mother vehicle instead of a motor vehicle. This is a typo, but let's get it done now so that you don't have to come back because we've done a typo again.
Where are they?
Under your increasing expenditures. 178, 91, 110, 718.
Do you want to put that? Form of a motion to write that down?
Yes, I do. And I tried to, but it wouldn't let me do anything.
Go ahead and press it once. All right, I need somebody else to second it.
I'll second it.
Or you can press it on the.
It's not, it's not there.
There.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Why don't we vote? Why don't we vote?
I don't know.
Change to mother vehicle.
Yes, change to mother vehicle. It's a motor vehicle.
Mine says motor vehicle.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment. If you're in favor of this amendment, please vote yes or no. If you're not.
So we're changing the word mother to motor, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just a typo.
You ready to vote, Chairman?
Yes, please.
This is for the.
Ms. Preston?
No, I want to keep mother.
Okay. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Okay, now we're going to go back and vote on this resolution as it was amended with the word motor.
And that motion was by Commissioner Stokes and Commissioner Ferguson. On favor, vote, please.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number Five. We need to amend this, this resolution. Now, I can't get the amend to take. You're talking about number five?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an amendment for a resolution.
Okay, what, you want to state your amendment?
If we need to amend this to a corrected amount and line item, and I'm going to defer to Ashley, she has to correct. Thank you, Ms..
We ended up getting more money off this capital outlay note than what we had originally budgeted in the budget. We had just put a flat $2 million. So we actually need to amend this amount, $114,369.30, to be $154,369.31 because they sent $40,000 early in good faith money, which was not taken into consideration when this resolution was done and $114,000 was tracked. Also, we need to amend the account numbers. So your revenue and your expenditures here, we will tax on at the end, 101. And that will be a cost center in our accounting software, which will keep these funds tracked completely separate from any other funds in 171 capital projects. So for example, your increased revenues, that account will now read 171, 49, 200 dot 101. Your expenditure will be 171, 91, 110, 724, 101.
Any questions?
154, 369, 31.
Your expenditure is 171, 91, 110, 724, 101. And I can give you, you know, I can write
that down for the county clerk, these amendments, if you guys need that.
Yes.
With your minutes.
Who made the motion for the amendment? Do you want to add that to it about adding the 101?
Yes.
Okay. That's also in his amendment.
And I apologize for that confusion. The Mayor Shannon can explain why you receive more than just the flat $2 million. I'll leave that up to him. But again, like I said, the amount needed to be changed here, I mentioned, to include $40,000 in good faith may be received early. And then according to the Capital Outlay Note Resolution that was passed, this money needed to be tracked completely separate. So that's why the trustee had set up the cost center, which now needs to be amended and added on.
The most important thing about the extra money is that you're not paying interest on that. You're only paying the interest on 2 million. So the extra hundred and something thousand, 150 something thousand dollars has to do with just the way this is bid. Unlike car loans and all this stuff, we can pay it off early if you want. We're not entitled to paying this off early for a period of years. And because of that, that allows them to bid more for a penny. So in essence, a penny is worth more on the front end of this loan than it is on the back end because we can't pay it off early. So they know they're going to get a certain amount of money out of this. No, there's no way to get out of it. They're going to get that. So they're willing to pay more for those pennies on the front end of the note than they are on the back, which has resulted in us getting that 153,000. The good thing about that 153,000 is that it is taking care of all the costs associated with borrowing this money and will probably cover the first year's interest payment. So you will still have a pure $2 million that you can work with for whatever project that may, that this may apply to. But you are not, I would think, not paying any extra interest on the 150 something thousand. Only paying interest on the $2 million. So it's just one of those flukes. Because we went out with a national vendor, we got a better rate, which works for our advantage. So it's just one of those flukes that because we went out with a national vendor, we got a better rate, which works for our advantage and give you a little extra money.
Mayor, would you say again, the interest that we actually got that loan on is the amount?
The first year you have to pay in, I think it's around thirty-nine thousand dollars on the first year's interest. And so this will take care of that and all the costs associated with just actually going through the paperwork of borrowing the money.
Did we get it at one point three?
One point three eight.
One point three eight interest, which is phenomenally good interest. And that also has to go with because you, as a commissioner, have been financially, you have been good stewards. And so Benton County, for its size, probably has the best classification rating on the Moody's Schedule that it can have. And that's an A-plus rating. We'd probably be better, if we were a larger county, we'd have a better rate. For our size, we've probably got the best rating we have at A-plus. And that's because of the conservatorship that you second with the taxpayers' money and keeping our ratio down, all this. Any other questions about that?
Okay, if not, we're going to vote on the amendment. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Okay, now we'll vote on the resolution as it was amended.
Is there any friends over in the meeting?
No. All right.
You ready? Yeah. I'm ready to vote now, please.
Yep.
Robert Preston? Brett Harder?
Yes.
Mike, are you trying to let it timeout?
I thought, no, I thought I voted. Guess I didn't get the push.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Commissioner Ferguson, did you want to say something?
Uh, wrong button.
Okay, we're moving on now to number six on the agenda. Is the resolution authorizing Benton County to join the State of Tennessee and other local governments and participants in the Tennessee State Subdivision Oplioid Affirmment Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Bring it to the floor. Any discussion? Okay, welcome. Everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes.
Do you have any idea how what the silver might be?
There in the package, you see, I think they have some six hundred and nineteen million, something like that, that the county of Tennessee. But exactly how that plays out, which county makes the plan, going to be largely determined by which county wants to participate. Because if the county does not participate, then that means that the tide is getting more coming to the Pilkington Law.
I hope if we get something like it, we put it back to education.
I'm all, I would be absolutely all in favor of that, but I'm pretty sure there'll be some pretty detailed strings attached to this money. If not, that would be great loses of funds.
Okay, any other questions? And we're going to move on to number seven on your agenda. Is the resolution acting as an agreement between Benton County Sheriff's Office and the Benton County E-911 Board? We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Discussion? If not, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Sixteen yes. Number eight is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents from the State of Tennessee for the Benton County Airport Maintenance Grant. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? If you have any solid, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Sixteen yes, motion here. Number nine on the agenda is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars from donations during the month of October within the annual shelter budget. Motion by Commissioner Stotz and we have a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions on this resolution? If none, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston? Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Sixteen yes, motion here. Number ten is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars from the City of Camden for their quarterly contribution to the Benton County Library. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions on this one? If not, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
I pulled it, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Number eleven is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the ROI fees within the medical examiner's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? If none, please vote. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Number twelve on the, on the agenda is a resolution budgeting funds in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars for the annual contribution towards co-rid for the emergency management budget. And a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions? I see, and sorry to bother you, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Next, number thirteen is a resolution budgeting the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Number One Funds received in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. You have any questions concerning this? Any discussion? Okay, if none, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Resolution number fourteen, and it's fourteen on the agenda, is transferring funds in the amount of seventy thousand dollars within the school's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stotz.
Ms. Milton?
No, I do not, I do not.
You got sticky fingers tonight, don't you? She's still got cake on her fingers. Okay, we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stotz. Any questions about this one? If none, please vote. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. The next one is a school resolution transferring funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars within the school's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stotz. Any questions? Everyone please vote. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Sixteen yes, motion here. Number sixteen on the agenda is budgeting funds received in the amount of three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents from medical claims reimbursements within the sheriff's budget. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about this? If none, everyone please vote. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Number seventeen is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents within the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Anyone want to ask questions about this? If none, everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Sorry.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Number eighteen is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the unassigned fund balance within Fund One Seventy-Eight Other Capital Projects for the reimbursable tourism enhancement grant. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Hopper?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, I don't think we need to get into this project right now because of all the other stuff we've got going on. Even though this is kind of free money, we're going to get started on that project and wind up in the middle of it. I don't like the idea.
Mr. Hopper, I agree with you one hundred percent. And so what we're doing with this is using this money, it does have a small match here. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant there by, that's a match that we have to pay, two thousand dollars. But what we're going to be doing is getting some enhanced drawings for multiple phases. Where we can then take these enhanced drawings as a comprehensive plan and begin working out for future grants and bring this area to completion. If it's the desire sufficient to do so. So now, this is not going to, we're not going to be in the middle of a project and something more money to be required. We're just getting some very comprehensive, detailed drawing that we can then take and parlay into a master plan, if you will, that we can then take and parlay into something that would be better. So.
Also, that this is a grant that we've already had for a year now. And it just wasn't utilized before June thirtieth for our fiscal hearing, so it needs to be rolled over into this current budget. But we've already been awarded this grant, we've had it for a year, we need to bring that into this current budget.
Unlike other grants where we did not apply for them and it would be no harm to Benton County by not moving forward with them. If we did not utilize this grant, since we've been awarded the grant, meaning other people did not give the money, this would be a black eye on Benton County's face. So we do not want that. We do not want to position ourselves poorly in place of the state. So that's why we're looking at a master plan project as opposed to trying to get in the middle of building this afterbid or in the middle of the worst possible time to do it.
Well, can we, can we at least get some of these other projects done with what we?
This money, other than the few thousand dollars that you're putting into for a match, this money is all grant money that's already just passing through. So this will not impact anything for this. And I agree with you totally.
Don't look at it as a project, because like you said, it's not breaking ground. This is all for services and giving us a master plan. It's not breaking ground, it's not a project like what we're all thinking.
Well, I just, I just don't want to get another project started, so.
Any other?
Give chairman. I'm done.
Well, she answered it there, so we just get paying three thousand, the cost of seventy-five thousand dollars for some plans, or the grant pays for it?
The grant pays, the grant pays for all those plans, but I'll tell you that, you know, architectural fees and engineering fees are quite expensive. And some of us today are talking about we might, we might have gone into the wrong business ourselves.
I understand.
But actually said by the, I'll not get you all the way out to do every, every, every virtual, every possible aspect of this project.
But there'll be no groundbreaker.
There'll be no groundbreaker. And I've gotten that approved by the state, our Northwest consultant, the architect engineers, everybody's on board with this to make this a reality. And to have some plans that we can then begin targeting some very specific grants to help out, to bring this to fruition, should it meet the desire of the commission to do so.
Any other questions, Mr. Preston?
Just a statement, just a statement. Mayor, the, your response to the tourism enhancement grant, thank you, they were very well put, and I appreciate your comments on that. Thank you.
Any others? Looks like we have none. So everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes. Okay, number nineteen on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of three hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance within Fund One Seventy-Two Community Development for the CDVG EMA Grant Project. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions?
Again, this is existing money. All we're doing is putting it into the line items for the anticipation of maybe sometime before we all retire, being able to get this EMA building bought and move forward with that particular project. So again, this is existing money, nothing new here, and we're trying to get that, this, our companies are working diligently with the other side. Maybe they'll pick up the pace on the other side and get everything moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Preston?
You did push the right button.
You did.
Mayor, is that the three fifteen that we've been working from?
Well, we already spent a little bit out of it last year, so it is now just three hundred thousand.
So we gotta make up the difference.
We gotta make up the difference, and there are probably a little bit more that's got to come out, that'll be made up for the total purchase before we're anticipating to the agreed purchase price for that building.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, any others? Does it show what I have any? So everyone vote, please. Robert Preston?
Yes.
Brett Harder?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion here is sixteen yes.